Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of Cleveland Heights City Council to order. It is November 4th, 7:33. Addie, would you call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Cuda.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Okay. No excusing absent members, no amendments to the agenda. Can we have approval of the minutes from the previous meetings?
We don't have any.
We don't have any, that's right. So, next on the agenda is the Life Saving Award. You have our Chief of Police, Chief Britton here, and Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you. And if you do speak, if you would come to the microphone, please, so we can pick that up on.
Good evening, Council, Council President, Mayor. I'd like to call up Mrs. Mary Ellen Gardner and Mr. Turner. So, um, no, you come up because you're the lead, but Mrs. Gardner reached out to me, sent me an email about actions of one of our officers, one I'm very proud of. So I'll let her and Mr. Turner explain what happened, and then I'll proceed with my part of this, okay?
Well, on the Saturday of Labor Day weekend, my husband attended a concert at Kane Park. And he did so alone because even though we have quite a few family and friends here, none of us wanted to go with him. So, and I had to work that evening, so I didn't get off work till 10 o'clock at night. And it was about 9 o'clock that, I won't cry, I promise, about 9 o'clock that he got out of the concert. So he walked to a nearby Cleveland Heights location, and actually, we don't know exactly what location was, to get a beverage, it was hot, very hot that day, and get a beverage and wait for me while I was coming. And apparently, he went into the establishment, ordered a glass of water and a cocktail, and when he reached for the glass of water, that's the last thing he remembered. His heart had completely stopped, the lower half of his heart had just completely stopped. He was at a potassium imbalance, and there was no rhythm, there was nothing left. And the people at the location called an officer, Weir responded and started CPR. And we've been told by every physician, from his general practitioner, to a cardiologist, to a neurologist, to a foot doctor, that there was only 1% chance that he would have lived through that event, had it not been for the efforts of Officer Weir. 1%, 1% chance was all he had. And Officer Weir saved his life, and even saved the quality of life, because other people, apparently, the 3%, the 7% who do live are nursing home for 30 days and then they pass. So Officer Weir not only saved his life, he saved the quality of his life. So we are forever indebted to this man, and we greatly appreciate his efforts and that your efforts in having him as one of your employees. He's just a wonderful person.
There's an old cliche that say, every time we do interviews, we ask our potential candidates, you know, why do you want to become a police officer? And the old cliche is, I want to help people, you know? And as police officers, oftentimes, we're the first one to respond to a scene. And like for Investigator Ware here, he was there on the scene, he acted quickly and promptly, didn't ask questions, assessed his medical condition, and gave him CPR. I'm certainly proud of him. He represents what we all represent here, is wanting to help people. With that being said, Investigator Ware, I'd like to present you this evening with the Life Saving Award. Who on the 31st day of August, 2024, while assigned to Basic Patrol, responded to a report of a male identified as Mr. Renard Turner, who was in cardiac arrest at 2195 Lee Road. Without delay, you promptly assessed his medical condition and performed CPR, ultimately saving his life. And according to his doctors, he would not have survived it had it not been for CPR provided by Officer Weir. Your actions have brought great credit upon yourself, the City of Cleveland Heights Police Department, and of the City of Cleveland Heights. And just also, on a side note, I know Investigator Ware is being a little modest. You know, we don't hear these stories often, but actually, back on October 9th, Officer Ware was also issued another Life Saving Award for an individual. Officers responded to a report of a suicidal male, that it actually went out a window, had an apparatus around his neck, him and his fellow officers acted quickly, used their cruisers, jumped up, cut him down, and saved his life as well. So, proud of you, Investigator Ware, and keep up the great work. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Would it be okay if our friends came and shook your hand as well, sir?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah.
Just have one thing to say. Officer broke some ribs, but I'll take it.
My ring is on, of course.
You're welcome, of course.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'll give you a hug.
You're welcome.
Anywhere, dude, you... A simulation of the war.
I was saying, if anybody...
Brian's, anybody?
I'm getting...
She's got a very important phone call.
Right there, you guys, hang on just a second. Okay, one more, Mary. Right here, okay, smile, please. After that ordeal like that... Ready, one more time.
You haven't taken a picture, you've got about 12.
All right. And...
Good work, chief.
I love the picture.
All right, thank you, Turners and Chief, and especially Officer Weir, for sharing the story with the community.
Tom's phone is still on the podium, I think.
Tom, grab it.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on with communications from the mayor. Sorry, Mayor, I caught you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I'd like to make a few things a matter of record. Sealed bids were received on October 24th, 2024, for Project 2406, North Park SSO Control Project. Four companies submitted bids. Fabrizi Trucking and Paving submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $2,390,407. Second, sealed bids were received on October 24th, 2024, for Project Number 2405, Yellowstone Sewer Separation and Water Main Replacement Project. Five companies submitted bids. Again, Fabrizi Trucking and Paving submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $2,132,227, In addition, Wade Trim Incorporated, the design engineer, is recommending a $200,000 contingency be added for this project for a total of $2,332,227.50. Then I'd also like to request permission to go to bid for the following projects. Project Number 2417, the Kane Park Stramp Installation and Improvement Project, and Project Number 2418, the Coventry Garage Improvement Project. And I don't know, I'd love it if Council would move to authorize us going to bid for those two projects. I don't know if they need to be done separately, or I always forget that.
Abundance of caution. Abundance of caution, yeah, let's do them separately.
All right, so Project 2417, Kane Park Stramp Installation and Improvement Project, requesting the authority to go to bid.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you kindly. And Project Number 2418, Coventry Garage Improvement Project, in my view, long overdue, and very happy to see this coming to the end of at least this particular leg of the journey, if Council would allow us to go for bid.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there we go. Any discussion? Really glad to see this as well. Just went through the garage the other day and needs it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
All right, and then lastly, I did want to provide Council a bit of an update in advance of Council receiving a new wage and salary ordinance from the administration. I did want to provide at least a little bit of an update in advance of that. We have been, obviously, in conversation with and consultation with Archer companies throughout this long wage and salary study that we've been engaged in for our non-bargaining unit positions here at the city. And we are finally seeing the light at the very end of the tunnel. We are anticipating a final report from Archer, which we will, of course, provide to Council in addition to an updated wage and salary ordinance that the administration will be proposing to Council for an update to our wages for these positions, and I think an update to these wages, which is also long overdue and now supported by the relatively rigorous process that Archer goes through in order to derive the value of a variety of the jobs through both market study and an examination of the duties of each job and how they relate to the organization as a whole, or to smaller divisions of the organization, and the difficulty levels of those positions. So we will be providing the ordinance, we will provide the additional information and the study that supports those changes that we'll be asking Council to make. And of course, when we provide this, we will also ask the representative from Archer to come and provide Council with a bit more of a refresher, and the public with a refresher on the process that we went through to get to this point. We're doing this sort of in tandem with our budget conversation, and the changes in our wage and salary ordinance will have a budgetary impact that we'll have to consider. But I feel confident that moving forward, it's the right thing to do, to right-size, and in many cases, that means increase the wages for the people who do work for the city. And so I just wanted to make sure that you guys got an update on that before we provide that. And I'll see about getting that to you as quickly as possible, so you can take a really long look at it. But additionally, I did want to advise that this isn't sort of just those positions in the city. We took a holistic look. The municipal court judge, Costello, is also a part of this, and we also took a look at Council's positions as well. So Administration, Council, the municipal court is all sort of in this study, and so we wanted to provide that information to you in advance of asking you to make the changes to the wage and salary ordinance. And with that, that's all I have for this evening.
And are the Commissions part of that study?
I don't believe that the Commissions were a part of the Archer study, but that is obviously something that Council can take up as well.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
City Administrator Report.
I just want to briefly, I know that you're aware, that the mayor has determined that tomorrow at noon, all non-essential staff will be, you know, will be closing, except for non-essential, except for essential staff, in order to perpetuate and encourage people to vote. This is obviously a very consequential election. We don't take positions on things, but I would just encourage folks to vote as if your welfare depends on it, because it certainly does. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any departmental reports? I don't think so, okay. None? All right, report of the Clerk of Council.
Nothing to report.
All righty, then, we'll go right into public comments. We do divide these public comments up into legislative items and then general comments, and this is so we don't go back and forth with stuff that we're actually voting on tonight, and it's stuff we're not voting on, and then, you know, so, but everybody who's signed up for public comment will speak. There's a three-minute time limit, and make sure when you come up, you know, you talk right into the microphone and say your name and the street you live on, and we'll start...
Harley Rubin.
I've spoken a few times already. I'm Harley Rubin. I live in Coventry on Lake Shore Road. I'm also a board member of Trans Ohio, a social worker at Metro Health, and leader of the community team at Cleveland Jewish Collective. Just coming up here to say thank you again, and also make a few more requests. I personally believe that elected officials at any level of public office should be advocating at other levels. So I really hope to see that not only will you hopefully pass tonight, as I think that you probably will, this resolution to protect gender-affirming care locally, but also advocating through your platforms and positions at the state level, and however you can. I really think that this issue is more than just for trans people, it's about all of us, it's about anyone who's gender non-conforming, and this is like, these attacks on our community assumes that we're just a small percentage of the population, and that we have no power. But other attacks, you know, on immigrants and other people in our community, other groups, we are really all connected, and anything coming for any of us will eventually affect all of us. So just wanted to say thank you, and that Trans Ohioans have always been here, and we will always be here, regardless of whether we're outlaws. So, thank you so much.
Stephanie Ash.
Is it possible to close these doors, just so we can hear everybody a little better? Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present some testimony today. My name is Stephanie Ash, and I'm a social worker and an attorney here in Ohio. I serve as the Region 3, Cuyahoga County, co-director for the National Association of Social Workers Ohio chapter, and I'm here to encourage you to pass the Trans Sanctuary Resolution that you have before you today. I do not live in Cleveland Heights any longer. I lived here for about a decade while I was attending case, and I live in Shaker Heights, and I'm just so excited by what you're doing here, and think you can really serve as a leader and a model for not only my community of Shaker Heights, but also Cuyahoga County, and even the country. So the reason that this bill is so important to me is that Ohio recently banned gender-affirming medical care for trans and gender-diverse youth, and it also severely restricted gender-affirming mental health care. These restrictions go against our code of ethics for social workers. By passing this bill, you are sending a message to not only trans and gender-diverse youth and adults, but also healthcare providers who are trying to provide gender-affirming care, that this is a welcoming space, and that you value inclusive and dynamic communities. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and also just encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Drew Herzic.
Drew Herzic, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Mr. Mayor, councilors, again, I'm speaking in favor of your resolution to declare Cleveland Heights a safe haven for gender-affirming health care, and I want to thank Harley Rubin for bringing this to the attention of the Council. Thank you, Harley. This, as has been said, this is part of the right-wing attack on bodily autonomy. This is also about women's health care. Gender-affirming health care is Cialis, basically. I mean, it's like, but it's being attacked. They've spent millions of dollars now in anti-trans advertising during this election cycle, so the targets are on our backs, and any resolution that helps provide more a safe haven is very welcome, so thank you for that. On a personal note, in the resolution, you say, "The City of Cleveland Heights has consistently affirmed its commitment to furthering transgender, non-binary, and gender-expansive equity, and supporting its transgender, non-binary, and gender-expansive community." I appreciate those words. How will you know if someone before you is transgender, non-binary, or gender-expansive? The answer is, you won't. We don't owe you any sort of gender performance, and no one should have to reveal any part of their identity in order to expect equity and support from you. In passing this, I would like you to examine yourselves and say, can you guarantee that anyone who comes before you, regardless of their status, will get equity and support from you? My personal experience is, no, that won't happen. So again, in passing this, I would like you to search your hearts and say, can you commit to making the City of Cleveland Heights the welcoming community we want it to be, where everyone can expect equity and support from you, and not retribution if they dissent? That would be a very positive outcome from this. The resolution itself is fantastic, but if you take it to heart and charge yourself now with actually enacting that equity and support for everybody who comes before you, then you will have done a major benefit to the city. Thank you very much.
That's it for agenda items. For non-agenda items, Brenda Tyson.
I live at 1728 Lee Road. I'm here, I'm Tyson, Christian Thomas, Tyson's grandmother, and I'm here to see if we got any update on the situation with him and the Police Department of Cleveland Heights.
I don't have an update.
Mayor.
I can talk with you, I think maybe you and I can step outside and have a conversation. I think that might be helpful.
I could tell you that the mayor has sent over the videos to Council. He did that the day after the last meeting, so it would have been, I don't know, like, towards the end of October. Yeah, really couldn't, couldn't see anything, but...
Okay, well, then, so we can see what the mayor has...
Counsel, I just wanted to...
Can you identify yourself? I'm sorry.
My name is Lori Middleton, and as we mentioned at the last meeting, that we are mostly all residents of Cleveland Heights. I'm in South Euclid now, but I was a Heights graduate in '83, so, I mean, this is really all we know. I want to thank you all for listening to us last time. We're not activists. We really don't know what to do, other than come to the meetings and hear out. I mean, we can't wait for our lawyer. We really don't know what to do. I mean, I was literally crying, because, I mean, we've been here almost our entire lives, and you pay your taxes, and you hear about Council, and now I'm thinking about the people that I knew that was in Council over the years, the police that we've known over the years, and we're really just here at the mercy of you all to find out what happened to Kristen. We'll be at the meetings, but we'll be here humbling, just waiting for you guys to tell us something. Not in any type of mean way, just in our humblest way, we're here with God behind us, and expecting for you guys to come through and help us to learn what happened to Kristen, and we thank you for your work towards it. Thank you.
I just want to assure you, I just want to assure you that upon my request last meeting, that the mayor did send over the videos for us to look at. They're probably the same videos that you all received, because we really couldn't see much of anything, and so from that, from there, we would probably have to call to find out how long the next process would take, because we really don't know. Okay?
Brady Dindia.
My name is Brady Dindia. I am a resident of University Heights, but I am on the Board of Coventry Peace and Artful, as many of you know. I just wanted to quickly extend a heartfelt thanks to each of you who did attend our final Peace Pops located in the Coventry Peace Building this past October 25th. It was a memorable Halloween celebration filled with live music, line dancing, hands-on art, a magnificent new giant puppet by Robin Van Leer, and our haunted forest, which was beautifully created by artful artist Jackie Brown. The building was alive with people of all ages and all backgrounds, and it was a vibrant, joyful example of the arts, culture, and education hub we've nurtured, and it was open to all at no cost. When I was working on the recap video of the event, it stirred up many emotions, as you can imagine, and I reflected on all the joy and connection these events have brought to our communities. Coventry Peace continues to be a topic of conversation across the Heights, as those of you who have read The Heights Observer have probably noticed. There are several stories about the fate of the building, and there are nice stories about our upcoming events. I'm going to plug those events real quick. That's Lantern Festival and our Coventry School Alumni Event, both on December 14th. You can go to CoventryPeaceCampus.org for more information. Lantern Festival will be our final public event in this building, and it is one of the most special events in the city. I encourage all of you to join us, everyone here, everyone watching, and help us celebrate what this building has meant over the decades to so many people in your community and in mine. I'd quickly like to also share with you that both Shannon Morris and myself are being honored with some awards from our City of University Heights in connection with the work we have done with Coventry Peace and Artful. Shannon was being named Neighbor of the Year. I am being named, oh, I'm being named Volunteer of the Year. If you are available on November 11th, please join us, because this has been a truly community effort. It's not just Cleveland Heights, it's not just University Heights, it's not just Peace Campus, it's all of us. Lastly, I just want to update you that the nine original tenants did receive notice this week that we do have to vacate by the end of January. We are actively searching for new homes, both as a group and individually, even meeting with some people and the city staff. We will keep you updated, and we just wanted to really come here tonight and thank you once again for everything, for showing up for us over and over again. So thank you, and everyone have a safe and wonderful election day.
Daniel Levin.
Hello, I'm Daniel Levin, Bradford Road. Just quickly, I was deeply moved by the ceremony at the beginning of this meeting. So nice to get wonderful news. 15-plus months ago, August 21st, I think, of last year, I came here to speak, and it was, I mentioned it was the very first time in my 14 years in Cleveland Heights that I've come to City Council to make a request. And that was about what I called parking meter... I've come to City Council to make a request, and that was about what I called parking meter light, which sounds like a fun name, but it has deep meaning to me. I knew that the infrastructure money was coming, it hadn't been spent yet, but keeping that in mind, this one-time wonderful fat bank account we had, I had hoped that some of the funds could be used to remove the meters, no matter what the long-term plan is for the parking meters, for revenue for Cleveland Heights in the future, that no matter what happens, whether we go back to parking fees or not, those meters exist, and they will be removed eventually, whether we have new meters or not, and it's expensive to remove them. So I had hoped that they would, it's something you would consider, and I thought about bringing photographs today. I'm a photography professor, and I thought, no, that's silly. This is our city, we all know it, we all park in it, but just to remind you, they're rusted, they're leaning, some have no head at the top of them, they're all eyesores, and they make our city look much older than the lively city that we have. I was pretty patient, 15 months waiting, not with bated breath, but I just thought, winter's coming, this is probably something that isn't going to be done during winter, if it's ever done. I don't know if you've ever discussed it, but winter's coming, and summer's over, and a lot of the funds have been spent. So I thought I would come back and just mention that I'm very proud of my city, and I think as someone who studies our landscape and teaches at a community college, I'm all about community, that it would be a much better city if it wasn't, is ugly, having these old meters that have no use any longer. So thank you for considering it. I hope it can be discussed at some time.
Lori Daigle?
Good evening, members of council. My name's Lori Daigle. I'm a Cleveland Heights resident on Overlook Road, and I'm here just to make sure I have communicated by email with members of the Public Safety Committee. On October 28th, the evening of 28th into the 29th, Lot Number One, Public Lot Number One, was vandalized with at least eight cars having their windows smashed. It was an inconvenience, it's not, you know, I'm not standing here saying it's the most important thing in the world, but I did want to make everyone aware of the fact that those lots are important to people in certain communities, and I understand that there is a, that there is a mission to put cameras and better lighting. I also noticed that one of the lights is out. They just need to be monitored better. Police response was great and quick. I was the first one out in the morning, and they were there pretty much immediately and took care of things. But again, it's like the parking meters, it's these little things that kind of crawl underneath, and I've had people say to me, oh, I lived out of the state for a long time and would not come back anywhere but to Cleveland Heights, but I've had people say, oh, is it safe? And that's kind of what we're hearing out there, and I want to be able to say with abandon, yes. So thank you for everything you do for our community. It's the best place on earth.
Good points.
That's all.
All right.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. He had two on his.
Okay, there we go.
Thanks, Drew.
A non-agenda item, Councilor Drew Herzic, Bradford Road, still. I want to speak about the police as first responders. Tonight, obviously, is bittersweet. We've heard about the police can save lives as first responders, but we also know that the police can take lives as first responders. It's an intolerable burden we're putting on our police department. Society has somehow decided that people with mental health crises are going to be turned over to the one part of our society that is authorized to use lethal force against our own members, kind of thing. This should not be the case. Lives are being lost because police are being put on the front line in a way that they are simply not prepared to do. It is not their fault, but mental health crises need mental health providers to deal with it, not somebody with a gun. If the city can find somebody, there are programs all across the country where anytime there's a mental health crisis called to the police department, a social worker is dispatched to ride along with the police, and it has saved many lives, kind of thing. So there must be some way that we can start to look at implementing this here again. The police should never be the first responders to somebody enduring a mental health crisis. It's not their fault, but it is certainly overwhelming them, and lives are being lost. This is part of the stigmatization of mental illness, that we decide it's not so important, we're not going to provide treatment, we're not going to provide community support, we're just going to send somebody out with a gun to try and deal with it. Nobody should be put in that position, and again, lives are being lost. As I said, there are many programs across the country where a psychiatric social worker or a social worker of some sort will ride along with the police anytime there's a call about a mental health crisis. I would really like Cleveland Heights to explore that possibility, because too many lives are being lost, and we must not put the police in the front line of dealing with mental health issues. Thank you very much.
All right, and again, always thank you to all the citizens that come up and speak. Appreciate that. We're going to move on to first readings. These are all, there's several of them, all for consideration for adoption tonight. We gave these a good going over in committee of the whole, so Eddie, why don't you go and read the first one?
First, I have Resolution Number 203-2024 on first reading. A resolution supporting and authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund for a grant under the program and to accept funding if awarded for the Attleboro Shelburne Trail for the Donbrook Restoration Park Improvements Trails Project, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 204-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Brine Works for the acquisition of certain snow and ice equipment for the Street Division of the Department of Public Works, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 205-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for construction management services relating to the Claredon Edgerley Waterline Replacement Project, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 206-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Banky Landscaping and Architecture for Design Services for the design of public spaces and streetscape areas along Noble Road and North and South Taylor Road, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution 207-2024. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ubiz Venture Capital for program management services for the Small Business Support Program, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 208-2024 on first reading. A resolution, excuse me, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with OHM Advisors for traffic consulting services, including the preparation of the South Euclid Road TLCI Road Diet Project Traffic Study, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number 209-2024 on first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio to enter into one or more installment payment contracts and related agreements in order to finance certain energy conservation improvements pursuant to Section 717.02 of the Ohio Revised Code, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. So moved. Sorry.
Mr. President?
Councilman Petrus?
I move to amend Ordinance 209-2024 by substituting the version marked, quote, "as amended 11424," for the version that was included in council's packet.
So moved.
Second.
Can I call in the law director to just explain this, just in case people are watching? Yeah, yes, please.
So the amendment is principally the addition in Section 1 of language that specifies a minimum of 20% of the contract amount being paid within two years of the purchase, which is just to make sure that that clearly is conformance with Ohio Revised Code 717.02.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
And I believe I had a motion for the adoption, but not a second.
Oh. I'll second.
I don't.
I believe.
I don't think there was.
No, there was. Oh, I thought.
Yep, I was about to do.
There should be a motion to adopt as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 210-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing an amendment of the agreement with Bricker Graden LLP for American Rescue Plan Act-related legal counsel services, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number 211-2024 on first reading. An ordinance giving final approval of the compensation rates and benefits proposed by the tentative labor agreements with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for the period commencing on April 1, 2024, through March 31, 2027, in S E R B case numbers 2023-MED-12-1140, unclassified basic patrol officers, unclassified police officers, and 2023-MED-12-1141 captains, lieutenants, and sergeants, granting the mayor the authority to sign said agreements, amending Section 2 of Ordinance Number 127-2024 wage and salary ordinance to incorporate the new terms of said agreements, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and the staff, especially the Law Department, and the consultant we hired, because this was very professionally done and well-explained to council, and we, it's always great to have a labor contract that, you know, goes smoothly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we're on to second readings.
First, I have Resolution Number 197-2024 on second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Classic Ford of Madison for the acquisition of two 2024 Ford F-350 one-ton regular cab trucks for the Refuge and Recycling Division of the Department of Public Works introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just wanted to let the public know that Resolution 197 and Resolution 198 are both connected. One is the cab, and the other is that body. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear before we pass the second one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 198-2024 on second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with McQueen Equipment LLC for the acquisition of two seven-and-a-half-yard 50-50 split-body easy-dump direct-truck mounts for the Refuge and Recycling Division of the Department of Public Works, introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I did want to respond to Councilman Posh's question earlier in the previous meeting. I did want to revise a bit of that comment. For Refuge and Recycling, this is potentially sort of a garbage truck of a sort. It's not one of our larger garbage trucks, but it is a smaller piece of equipment that allows, say, for instance, if, God forbid, a garbage truck misses a residence, they didn't see it, it was behind a parked car, something like that, instead of sending sort of a full garbage truck out, this split easy-dump mount allows it still to be marginally automated in that it assists in the dumping of something into the body of the truck, but it isn't sort of the same automated, and it can be used, I believe, for other things that needed to be loaded in an easier way, in an assisted way, into the body of the truck as well.
All right, so we've had a motion, a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 199-2024 on second reading. A resolution proclaiming the city of Cleveland Heights a safe haven for gender-affirming healthcare introduced by Councilmember Larson, President Cuda, Vice President Russell, and Councilmembers Maddox, Petrus, and Posh.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Councilwoman Larson?
When Harley Rubin asked council to take a stance on Cleveland Heights as a sanctuary for gender-affirming healthcare, I told him I'd be happy to help. Resolution 199-2024 reflects this council's continued support for transgender, non-binary, and gender expansive people. Council started the year by passing Resolution 19-2024, which condemned the enactment of Ohio HB 68 as discriminatory and harmful to transgender youth. Resolution 199-2024 declares council's support for gender-affirming healthcare in Cleveland Heights. For any transgender, non-binary, and gender expansive people, you are safe here. Thank you to my colleagues for cosponsoring this legislation.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. President, thank you. I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Larson for her work on this, and Harley for your inspiration. With transgender people across the state under attack, as was noted earlier, millions of dollars being spent on egregiously anti-trans ads, this is very meaningful to me and so many other people, so thank you so much.
All right. Mayor?
So, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to council for pursuing this, and I assume for passing it in advance. It is so clear that there is a powerful, especially in Ohio, contingent of people that want to put us in boxes and define how we can be ourselves, and it's disgusting. And I want to thank you all for standing up in the face of that, and it makes me proud to be in Cleveland Heights, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, with no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we're on to committee reports. Councilwoman Larson, what a surprise.
Sorry.
No.
Somebody else can go first. You're right.
I like when you go first.
Okay.
Feels right.
The Finance Committee met at 5:00 p.m. today. We came close to finalizing a scope of work for Frank Ford for data analysis of the, scope of work with Frank Ford for data analysis of the current banking lending practices and the neighborhoods we want to zoom in on for data. We also discussed a plan for determining local bank lending programs that would be beneficial to our minority residents seeking mortgages and home improvement loans. The next meeting of Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will be November 18 at 10:00 a.m., and Director Klinksky will be our guest.
Mr. President, thank you. The Housing and Building Committee met at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 14. The committee completed its discussion of tenant and landlord rights and responsibilities in Cleveland Heights, and requested that the Law Department draft legislation regarding the distribution of these rights and responsibilities. We continued our work on housing-related recommendations from the Racial Justice Task Force, and we reviewed sections of the codified ordinances regarding the parking of commercial vehicles in residential driveways. We will likely hold a hearing later this year regarding potential changes to these sections. At the request of the mayor and the City Council president, the Housing Committee spent a lot of time earlier this year working on legislation regarding short-term rentals. The Law Department shared with the Housing Committee that the legislation can now return to full council for consideration. Additionally, the Law Department started, I'm sorry, stated that staff members had an interdepartmental meeting regarding legislation to enhance inspections for buildings of certain ages and heights. Finally, the Housing and Building Committee's next meeting is at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 12. Thank you very much.
Councilman Cobb?
Thank you. Earlier this year, President Cuda had suggested that my committee bring in all of the chairpersons of the various boards, commissions, and committees that the city has, and we had that meeting last. meeting last Monday. It was a very productive meeting. It's the first time, I believe, in the recent history of the city that we'd ever invited in the board members to share with us their comments, what they needed from council of the city, and they had a lot of great ideas about things to improve their work. And for my council members that weren't able to attend, I'll be working on a memo to get that out to you, and it's our hope that going forward, we'll start having an annual meeting like this. That's all I have.
All right, Vice President Russell?
I just want to announce that everyone who have been interested in the dog park, the second public hearing will be this Wednesday at 6:00 PM in council's chambers. Please come with your questions, your comments. We'll have guest speakers from Dr. Scott, a veterinarian. We will have surrounding guests from surrounding communities to give you information about the dog parks and their viewpoint and what has happened in their communities and what's best for a dog park in Cleveland Heights to give us some information. So, anyone who has a dog, who is very interested in this subject and topic, please make sure you're here this Wednesday, this Wednesday, day after Election Day at 6:00 PM, right here in council's chambers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Vice President. Any other committee reports? All right, on to old business, on to new business, on to council member comments. Councilman Maddox?
All right. It is the day before Election Day, and I could not let this slide. Before I say anything to the public, I want to shout out all of the volunteers, not just in this city, but across the county, the state, and the country, who have been pounding the pavement for months, pushing and making phone calls, making sure that people get to the polls. Shout out to all the drivers who are planning to come out tomorrow. Shout out to Councilwoman Russell, who has been setting the county on fire, moving from place to place. I'm hearing her as I'm crisscrossing in and out of rooms all over the place. There's been a huge drive to get people to the polls tomorrow, and so I want to encourage everyone to vote. And if you did vote, pat yourself on the back, but the work is not done. I need you to push tomorrow to make sure everyone that you know is also voting. I can't tell you how to vote, but I can tell you why I'm voting. I'm voting for my grandbabies. I'm voting for their future. I'm voting for every woman that I know and their right to make their own decisions. I'm voting for the future of this country and its leadership. I'm voting for safety. I'm voting for our economic future. I'm voting to make sure that this country is shaped in a place that is safe for all people, and I want to encourage you to vote from the top to the bottom. It is critical. There are local issues, local representatives here who are ready to work for you and serve you. There are some amazing people on the ballot, and so I want to challenge you and encourage you to vote tomorrow. People die for that right to vote. They literally, when you vote, you're standing and you're stepping and you're walking in the blood and the sweat and tears of those who have gone before us. It is our responsibility, not just our right to vote, and so I want to push that as hard as I can. As a council member, as a pastor, and as your neighbor, I want to encourage you, if you don't do anything else tomorrow, vote and call at least 10 people to make sure that they made it to the polls. If you've got a car, you've got a responsibility to help someone get to the polls tomorrow as well, and so we've all got that responsibility. I just want, again, shout out all of the volunteers who are going to be at the polls from open to closed tomorrow, no matter what the weather is looking like, and everyone who has watched and called, their family members, their friends, and their neighbors. Put it on Facebook, put it on Instagram, remind people that tomorrow is critical. It's a vote-or-die situation. There are lives on the line, our freedoms on the line, voices are on the line, and you use your voice when you vote. And so I just want to encourage everyone to do that again. I'm going to get off my soapbox, and again, I want to encourage you, no matter what happens tomorrow, no matter what that outcome is, we are still one country, and I pray for peace across this country, not just tomorrow, but as we continue to get those results. Let's just remember that we are still all one community, all right? Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
First of all, I'd definitely like to thank the mayor for giving the staff the half a day off for tomorrow to give them the opportunity to vote, and I wish most and many establishments and places would do the very same thing. Most of you don't know, and I thank Councilman Maddox for recognizing the work I've done, I've been in charge of two states this election cycle, Detroit as well as Ohio. And so, as well as my council seat, I have been actually on the road on weekends after work, plus working, driving a school bus, and covering ground in two states and hosting canvassing operation, phone banks, and text messages. And as of this whole weekend, I have been working seven days a week. I will be out there tomorrow from 6:30 AM until the polls close, making sure people are knocking on doors, phone banking, and to get out the vote, especially in the African-American community. I do not want us to stay at home. I want us to actually get up and vote. We must do it for the very life of us, and that's why I've worked so hard. I had to tell Council President Kuta to please forgive me on some things, but at this time, I believe this election was the election of our lifetime. We say it all the time, but this was and is the election of our lifetime, and I can't wait until it's over. Thank you.
That's the way it works.
Vote.
Any other council member comments? All right, so Vice, I'm sorry, Council President's report. So, sorry, it's going to be a little bit longer than usual today. I can't tell you how much I want to echo and emphasize everything that's been said about voting tomorrow. Voting is everything. It's the only thing that should be on our minds tomorrow. This is the future of our country, and this is the time when we get to make the choice, and I hope we all take advantage of that. So, I want to talk about Coventry Peace Campus. I'm going to put my glasses on for this. They've been such a great asset to this community, and as you saw, if you were watching the Committee of the Whole, you saw us with Peace Pop pictures and so forth, and unfortunately, they have to vacate by the 31st of January. But City Council met with the Library Board on October 8 to discuss the future of the Peace Campus, and the results of the meeting were that we learned the Library Board's intentions. And I was going to talk about this a couple of weeks ago, but we had a very intense meeting two weeks ago, and it just would not have been appropriate, but I do want to get this on the record. Nine out of, this is what we learned at the meeting on October 8, and the meeting was between us and the Library Board, which owns the Coventry Peace Campus. Nine of the 12 tenants have to be out by January 31. The remaining tenants are being asked to vacate their leases. The building will then be mothballed, and the Library Board made it clear to us that they're very comfortable about being unsure of the future of the building, but they will, in the next six months, let us know. Since the October 8 meeting, there seems to be some confusion from some residents and some of the people who attended the meeting as to why we even had the meeting, and I want to clear that up about what the meeting was to accomplish, and in my view, we established that in several email exchanges in September. On September 12, we got some emails from the Library Board members. I'm going to just read a few quotes, because I want you to understand where we were coming from when we organized this meeting, and I'm speaking for myself, because I was the person that helped put it together. These are quotes from Library Board members who were emailing us again in September. "The Library Board is in a decision-making mode in which all options are still being considered. If you are willing to provide resources, financial or otherwise, now is the time to talk to us." That's what I was going on. "Library Board's in a decision-making mode. All options are still being considered. If you can bring some resources to the table, now is the time to talk to us." On September 23, I wrote this email. "Based on the Library Board being willing to work together, I would like to arrange a joint meeting with the Library Board members, Nancy Levin, Mayor Brennan, who's been very supportive of the Coventry Peace Campus, and any other elected officials who would like to attend. The purpose of the meeting would be to find a long-term, fiscally responsible solution that keeps the Coventry Peace Campus tenants in place and allows for the growth necessary to keep it sustainable. The only precondition I had for the meeting with Library Board members, and I put this in writing to them, was that they come with some numbers to the table. In other words, what do you need from Cleveland Heights and University Heights and possibly other entities to make this work?" I thought that was pretty straightforward. On September 29, Library Executive Director Nancy Levin responded to my September 2030 mail. She said, "We would be happy to meet after our October 7 meeting." She posited October 8. I responded, "Okay." Addie set up a doodle poll, and we got a quorum for the meeting for October 8. So, I hope this sequence of events makes it clear to everybody who was confused about why the meeting took place or how it happened. The confusion for me began when the meeting started on October 8. So, this is a month ago now, but I'm sorry, this is the first time I've had to address this. After saying "it's all about the financials" at the Library Board meeting, I heard that refrain over and over again. When two council members raised their hand after the financial report was read, the Library Board Executive Director said, "It's not about the financials." To juxtapose those two things was just, we were off to a pretty confusing start, at least on my part. When the Library Board Treasurer talked about expenditures for the Coventry Peace Campus, she said she had no data about revenue. If we were going to have a meeting about our budget and we didn't know anything about revenue, I think I'd gavel the meeting. When I repeated something that was said the night before October 8 at the Library Board meeting, when Library Board members said they did not want to be a landlord, a Library Board member said that was not true. I went back and read the transcript. That statement was made word for word at the meeting just 24 hours before our joint meeting with the Library Board. Then, there was this issue of the Library Board-sponsored survey and the Library Board-sponsored public forum. 1,600 people responded to the Library Board's survey. 160 people attended a Library Board-sponsored meeting, public meeting. According to both the survey and the public meeting, the vast majority of the respondents were supportive of keeping the Coventry Peace Campus intact. But all of a sudden, that seemed irrelevant when we discussed it. The discussion went something like this. "There are residents who will never come to a meeting or fill out a survey." I certainly agree with that. "Those residents matter too?" Absolutely. But then, it somehow seemed like, therefore, we cannot rely on surveys and public meetings to gauge public opinion, and I disagree with that strongly. I want people to know, who participate in public discourse, to know that they matter and that they are appreciated if they fill out a survey or come to a meeting. Hopefully, all public officials look for people who are not involved and try to find a way to get them involved. I know I do. I know others on this dais do as well. But you don't help the disenfranchised by dismissing or minimizing people who do bother to fill out surveys or come to meetings to express their opinions. And just ask the hockey parents who came here demanding that we do something to fix up the North Rank and get it up and running. I'm sure they were all glad that they came here. After the meeting was over, some Library Board members said the October meeting was premature. Other Library Board members said it was too late. The biggest problem I had with the October meeting was that the Library Board didn't come to the meeting with an ask, and that was the precondition. I never felt like all options were on the table as they had previously said. By the end of the meeting, all I could hear was the Temptations singing Ball of Confusion. That was just, my head was spinning. Now, that does not mean, though, that we would have been able to find a solution. I'm not saying that. This is a very difficult problem, and it was going to be very difficult to make the financials work. My problem with this meeting was is that we did not try, and in my view, the meeting was not in good faith. If I would have gladly, if they would have called me up and said, "Hey, you know what? We've made up our mind. Tenant's out. Mothballs in," I would have canceled the meeting. There's no reason to meet. All you had to do was call. To be clear, I respect the Library Board's authority, and I realize the whole experience of being a landlord was not a good one for them. I also want to make it clear that I value the work of the Library Board and the library staff. The new Noble Library is a jewel in Cleveland Heights, especially for the Noble Road community. I just want our public institutions to work together in good faith. That's all I'm asking. We owe that to ourselves. We owe that to the community. In my view, City Council has been a good-faith partner to our library system. We supported many of the Coventry Peace Campus tenants with ARPA funds. We also used ARPA funds for the Library Board's renovation of the playground that's right outside of the Coventry Peace Campus. I think we've been a good partner, and as far as the Coventry Peace Campus goes, I want to say thank you to all the tenants. You have contributed mightily to the betterment of our community, and as you saw in the presentation we gave in Committee of the Whole. As for the future, I want to thank our city staff for helping the Coventry Peace Campus tenants find alternative spaces for their nonprofits, and I hope that all of them will be able to stay in Cleveland Heights and continue the good work you do. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.